Good afternoon, welcome to our committee of the whole agenda for Wednesday, May 22, 2019. Like to welcome everyone here today and start off with any declaration of interest. Seeing none, I will move to community announcements and I'll start on my right with Councilor Cruthers.
Thank you. We had a great time last weekend planting trees out in Ward Three with Forest Ontario. They did a wonderful day where they had brought in other specialists. There were snakes. I've got a great picture of the mayor with a snake around her neck, a real boa.
Snake, real boa.
Yes. I said in my, on my social media, everywhere I go with the mayor, we make new friends. So, and anyways, that was a fantastic day. A lot of trees were planted and I was just saying to Councilor Crone, Ward Three definitely needs trees, so glad to help them out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crone.
Ward Three, thank you for your support. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we had a great time planting trees, both for Forest York Region and for the Scouts in Mount Albert, so I appreciate everyone that did that. As well, we had attended the opening night of the car show, had a great turnout there and the weather was kind of so-so, but we had a good turnout and I know as the temperatures get better, it'll be even stronger. And as well, I have one last announcement. The North Union Hall is once again having its strawberry supper and it is on June 19th, so if you would like tickets, I'd be happy to provide you with some. I see, I have a taker over there to my left. Thank you very much, Councilor Morton. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just looking forward to some of the events that are coming up. Our Sharon Temple is having their heritage celebration on Thursday, June 6th and it's always a wonderful evening with gourmet food, many of it, much of it local, as well as some wonderful performances. I believe tickets are $100 and it of course goes to a great cause. The EG Gardeners are having their annual plant, their plant sale and I believe it also includes a bake sale. It's from 10 to 2 at the Mount Albert Community Center. That's this Saturday, sorry, 10 to 12 and that's this Saturday, the May 25th. And I don't know if folks are aware, but there is a new professional soccer league that's kind of kicked off in York Region that's called the Canadian Premier League. And there is a soccer club called the York Nine. I don't know if folks are aware of it. They had their season opener a couple of weeks ago down in Hamilton, but their home opener is, is this Saturday at 4:00. It's apparently going to be aired on CBC TV and it's, the league is sort of a European style league where they don't have playoffs, so the best team is actually the best team based on their season's play. I will be in attendance representing our community that day, but I believe there was a link sent to Mayor Haxson and I. If staff would like to attend, there is a link for staff to, to click on and reserve some free tickets for Saturday's game. So, a very, a very generous offer from, from the York Nine Soccer Club and certainly behooves us to, to support them in what they're doing because they are representing York Region. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Morton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my weekend was pretty quiet, but just to add a little, some things to Tara's comments, I do have my ticket already for the Heritage at the Sharon Temple and looking forward to being there. The East Glinbury Gardeners last night actually put out a request to anyone that has extra flowers. They'd be pleased to, to have them at their sale on Saturday. They need to be dropped off at Civic Center at, or at the Community Center on Friday afternoon so they can get them labeled and everything else ready for Saturday. And Tara mentioned the York Nine. I'm delighted that they are going to be part of our street festival at Sports Day next weekend and so it'll give them opportunity to get the word out about what they're all about. So, that's it for now, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilor Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things, going back a couple of weeks now, myself and I know some other council and yourself attended the York Regional Police Appreciation Dinner. That was an excellent event and it certainly was a pleasure to, to go. As Councilor Crone mentioned, the car show opening was, since the last council, it was a smaller crowd and the, the weather certainly was a little on the cool side, but they are counting on a little bit better weather to bring those people in. And about a week ago now, the Sharon Temple Supporters Evening was another great event. They looked after some longtime employees there and it was a great event to be at. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Along with, I guess, most of the events that people went to, I was there at some point or another, but there are a couple of others. This past week was the annual McHappy Day at McDonald's and we're very fortunate now that we do have a McDonald's that supports different charities in our community and they were supporting South Lake Hospital and a number of our emergency services staff were also there assisting on the day. Myself, along with Councilor Cruthers, attended the 25th Ceremony of Good Shepherd Catholic School. I know that's hard to believe, it's been in operation 25 years. I presented a plaque on behalf of council and also it was the celebration of the 50th Year of York Catholic District School Board, so quite memorable for the school that day. Lake Simcoe Cleanup Fund is underway with a major fundraising campaign for the Scanlon Education Center. Chairman Emerson hosted a fundraising breakfast to assist with their efforts. They're looking for $3 million to build a new education facility and I believe that they're well on their way to the first million and have some pledges to move it even a little bit closer. I also attended the, the car show and it was, as Councilor Foster said, not quite the right evening for it, but they did have groups that were there that were very hearty. I attended the Holland Landing Girl Guides Advancement Ceremony last week and it was a celebration of accomplishments with over 60 girls and, and young ladies. There were seven members of the organization that received their Canada Cord, which I've never been to an event that there's been that many young ladies. They have 10 dedicated leaders and in spite of what sometimes you think that Girl Guides and Brownies and Cubs and Scouts are, are diminishing in numbers, they're growing and they're looking for another location to start a new Pathfinders Group as well. Coming up, May 23rd, which is this Friday, Caroline Mulrooney is hosting a seniors information session at the Sports Complex from 9:00 to noon. Everyone is welcome to come. Please mark your calendars. Tomorrow from 2:00 to 7:00 is the Farmer's Market kickoff and opening and they're celebrating their 10th anniversary. And Friends of the Library are hosting an author reading at the Civic Center, 7:30 next week and it is their 50th author reading. They use this facility here and the acoustics are very good and the author stands at the podium and speaks and talks about what they were thinking about when they wrote these books and, and 50 very well-written Canadian books and, and authors to share their ideas of, of good writing. And with that, I think that's, covers everything that we've had. With that now, I would move to presentations and I don't believe we have any presentations at this time.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And item E is deputations and I'm not seeing any deputations either.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move to item F and that's Emergency and Community Safety Services with Councilor Roy DiClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no prepared items on our agenda today. Chief, do you have anything to, to bring forward?
With thanks, nothing further.
Members of committee, anything you'd like to raise into this area? Seeing nothing, I'll turn the chair back to you.
Thank you very much. We're on item G and that's Corporate Services with Councilor Morton in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item on the agenda has to do with the unaudited 2018 year-end financial position, so Mr. Veltic, are you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to bring you this report and we think it's a really good news story, 2018 unaudited results. Just to let council or let the committee be reminded that this is sort of an advance report that we do in advance of the auditors being present to speak to you. They will be here, we're scheduling them in June to come and speak to you directly, so you will have an opportunity to hear from the auditor and ask the auditor any questions you might have about the audit process, but this is simply a little bit of an advanced reporting on what the unaudited position looks like for the town. We're very pleased with it and with your okay, I would ask our Financial Services Manager, Valadima, just to go through a brief presentation, just to put the report into context.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Going to go through with you today, the unaudited year-end financial position. So, before we get into where we're at with the year-end position, we just want to give you a little overview of what's included in the year-end review process. So, our process begins early November, preparing information for the auditors on internal controls, roles and responsibilities, and a preliminary financial analysis. An extensive amount of work goes into preparing for the annual audit, including a line-by-line financial analysis to determine variances and explanations. Key variances have been highlighted for you in the staff report. The audit with BDO is a result of one of our N6 initiatives, provides us with preferred costing on this audit. BDO, as General Manager Veltic mentioned, will be here at the end of June to present the financial statements and will be able to answer any specific audit-related questions at that time. Today, we want to focus our presentation on the allocation of the operating surplus and the status of our reserves. So, as mentioned in the report, the overall surplus is derived from three main areas, the general operations, water and wastewater, and development and fee-supported. These align with the categories that we use to develop our budget. From general operations for 2018, we see a reserve contribution of 2.6 million. The details of what makes up that 2.6 million is laid out on the report, however, the main drivers come from three main areas. One-time revenue from supplementary taxes and program areas. One of the tools that we use to predict the supplementary revenue is our development dashboard, so we have many tools within finance that help us, but just a reminder that one is that development dashboard that we are very proud of and a very helpful tool. Another main contributor to the surplus for 2018 is salary gapping. Approximately half of that gapping is coming from emergency services due to the pause in hiring from the full-time firefighter, as well as lower-than-budgeted costs from our paid-on-call programs. Just a note, we budget based on past experience, estimated call volumes, duration of calls, however, as with emergency services, call volumes and types will vary. 2018 happened to be a year of budget savings. It's important to note that one or two structure fires can use up those extra savings quite quickly, not directly related to an increase and decrease in call volume, it's the duration of the calls that impact that budget. We also had some programs with lower costs than budgeted and those are detailed in the From our water and wastewater area, we're seeing a reserve contribution of 3.4 million. We budgeted for a reserve contribution of 1.5, showing an increase of about 1.8 over what we budgeted. Of this 1.8 million, about one-third comes from a one-time revenue increase of water meter sales and drinking water permits. The other two-thirds is related to increased water consumption. New homes are occupied at various stages throughout the year, not something that we can budget for on an annual basis. Of those new homes in 2018, we added about 1,800 accounts to our water billing in 2018. Of these accounts, the consumption was about 100,000 cubic meters, which would account for approximately half of that revenue from increased water consumption. The other half would result from an increased water consumption likely due to an overly hot summer, increased irrigation, different watering patterns throughout the area. Just a reminder that we do have a financial plan that estimates our water infrastructure costs and that is coming up for renewal in 2020 and our water and wastewater rates are detailed in that plan. And if you recall during the budget process, we are still setting our rates below what that plan is recommending. Within our development fee-supported area, you'll see the various reserves and draw contributions for each of the different areas. We do see a reserve contribution from the building area and a draw from reserves in the other areas. These areas fluctuating development activity and development cycle all dictate whether or not there is a reserve contribution or draw. Planning fees will increase at the beginning of the growth cycle and building fees and activity will increase at the end of the cycle. And we will look at the trend lines in the, in the reserves coming up in a couple of On this table on your printout, you will notice there's a slight typo under the subtotal we've corrected out on the screen here. The first section shows our proposed allocation for the, the surplus from general operations. We propose a 60,000 contribution to the winter operations reserve, additional funds to assist with any unanticipated weather events that could result in some unexpected costs. 400,000 allocated to emergency services directly related to the savings from that area and that will assist with continued implementation of the multi-year plan. We have contributions to our general capital and building reserves to help assist with upcoming projects and building foundation for future growth. Investment in the IT reserve to support technology improvements that will increase service effectiveness, efficiency and security in those areas. The allocations from development and fee-supported and water and wastewater are directly related to those programs. When we take a look at our reserve balances dating back to 2014, this graph is showing where those balances are lying and what those trends look like. So, the dark blue line is in relation to our operating reserves. This increase is largely driven by contributions to the asset replacement funds. As council is aware, this is a high strategic priority for the town and we'll talk more about the asset replacement reserves in the next slide. The green line, you will note, development fee-supported, this is the overall balance in those reserve areas. You'll note that prior to 2016, they were in a negative position. In 2014, the development fee-supported was in a shortfall position of almost $2 million. As part of a strategy to address the shortfall, staff undertook a comprehensive fee review that resulted in a new fee structure. You can see the growth pattern increasing through to 2018. The yellow line depicts the water and wastewater reserves steadily growing, largely asset-driven, and will be discussed in further detail in a couple of slides. For our tax-supported asset replacement reserves, you'll see the graph on the left depicts the annual amounts. The blue line on the left shows our annual amortization, accounting terms for the annual cost of using those assets. The yellow line is our actual contribution to reserve, still not quite catching up to the blue line of the amortization amount. And the green line is our budgeted contribution. The difference between the green and the yellow is the operating surplus. The graph on the right shows our cumulative balances in those reserve accounts, the green line being the net book value of those reserves, the red line being the accumulated amortization, so the accumulated cost over time, and the blue line being our reserve balance. To be fiscally responsible, ideally, the blue line should be as close to the red to ensure that the organization is putting away enough money to replace these assets in the future. The bottom line here is that EG is doing very well, however, we need to stay focused on closing that gap. Similar to the last slide, these ones depict water and wastewater reserves, graph on the left would be the annual amount. The blue line shows the annual amortization, the cost of using those assets. The green line, higher than the annual cost, however, this is due to surpluses, not to budgeted amounts. The yellow line would be our budgeted contribution. The difference between the green and the yellow again is the operating surplus. The graph on the right shows our cumulative balances, green being the net book value, red the accumulated cost over time, and the blue line is the reserve balance. Ideally, again, we want the blue and the red to be as close together as possible. The gap between the reserve balance and the accumulated amortization is approximately $30 million, but the good news is that gap is gradually shrinking. So, our next steps in where we're at for 2018 year-end is to endorse in principle the allocation of the unaudited operating surplus as detailed in your report. You will note in the report that we state July for the adoption of the statements. We are ahead of schedule in the year-end audit, so we're targeting for the June 18th meeting. And BDO will be here to present their audit findings and the financial statements.
Thank you, Val. It's a wonderful report and you've worked very hard on it and it certainly shows. Members of committee, questions for Mr. Veltic or Val? Counselor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. I found it very, very insightful. I do have one question. The, when you look at the, the reserves, the, the reserve balance for water and wastewater kind of sticks out as being a little high. You know, we, certainly in my experience, residents have spoken out loud and clear, they are very concerned about the pricing of our, of our water, what they're paying and I appreciate that you, you need to pay for what the, the cost and that we have more pipes than probably any, any community, community in the GTA area, in York Region for that matter. There's an expense to that. Coming from the insurance world, we had, we were criticized often for over-reserving as well. We would, certainly when there was a claim, we would reserve for the worst-case scenario and, and 9.9 times out of 10, we never had to use the full reserve and so we were, we were being very prudent of protecting ourselves and cautious and conservative as insurance companies tend to be. It protected ourselves. Have we ever, the point of my question is, have we ever brought in or do, is it our practice to bring in outside auditors to challenge our reserving practices? Something we used to do in the insurance world, I was just wondering if that was something that we did here to make sure that, yes, this is proper and just and...
Mr. Veltic.
As it should be. Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, to Councilor Crone, it's a great question, appreciate you asking that. We, with the water and wastewater in particular, because it's regulated and licensed part of our operation, we're actually required in the CIES department we work with very closely to do a multi-year water and wastewater sustainability plan. It actually, under regulation, must be seen to be not only operating to ensure that folks are getting consistent, potable water to appropriate quality levels, but also that the system itself is financially sustainable. So, we did have our first study done, I believe it was 2016, if I'm not mistaken, in that timeframe. It's a five-year plan. It's going to be updated again in 2020. Our rates are actually a little lower than what was recommended in that five-year plan, but we're comfortable with, with the rates that have been set by council. What I would recommend is, given that we're going to be doing another rate study in 2020, during the 2020 budget process, we may want to look at what, if any, adjustments we make to the water rates pending the results of that next level of study. So, yes, they are subject to external review and study and I think there's an opportunity in the 2020 budget cycle to talk about that and see whether there's a, an opportunity to, to sort of maybe slow down a little bit until we get that next, that next study completed in 2020. But that's something that I would recommend be part of the discussions in the 2020 budget process.
Answer your questions, Mr. Crone? Councilor Crone? Mr.?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. My comment is the same, very similar to Councilor Crone's. We, we are doing very well, extremely well, and when you take a look at over $3 million, to the average resident, it, it seems like a lot and I'm wondering, we're talking about having a look at it next year, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to have a water rate review even going forward at this point? Just to, just to see how we are, where we fit and so instead of starting it when we're doing budget, perhaps we have it in, in our back pocket at that point to, to start to think about some other opportunities or ways of, of making sure that we're in the right, in the right stream.
Madam Chair, through you, to the mayor, one of the things that, as you can see on the slide that's up in front of you, the, the green line is our actual contributions to reserve and you can see it exceeds the blue line, which is, is essentially amortization. Another word for amortization is the amount of those assets that you're consuming in that year. So, we're actually exceeding a little bit that contribution and what that does is, it slowly closes the gap on, on the chart on the right between the total amount to date that you've consumed of those assets versus what you've got set aside to replacement, to replace them when they require major, either major retrofitting or full-out replacement. So, ideally, we would continue with this until the, the blue line reaches the red. At the current rate of contribution, that would take about 30 years. So, it certainly, council's prerogative to slow that down or speed that up, but I do think there's some opportunities to take a look and we can accelerate some of that review. I do know that working with our CIES folks, we're undertaking an asset management plan right now. A big part of our asset management plan is the underground assets, which is largely your water and wastewater systems and so we will be bringing back further information on that, which I think will be very informative to the discussion around rates and rate setting. So, there'll be, there certainly will be lots of information and I don't know what the timing is for coming back on the asset management plan update, but I do believe it's during 2019. So, we'll, we'll get back to you with that, but we can, we can certainly update further and there's no reason we can't start some of that analysis in advance of the budget cycle.
Thank you. Just a supplementary, I, we all know that the water costs are, are directly affected by the water use that we have and we all tend to think we're conserving water, but until someone gets a bill that's outlandish, we don't hear from them and they find out that they've left a water running or they have a, some kind of appliance that is, is not working properly and I'm wondering if there, this is an opportunity, we have an environmental committee that we send a, a message back to our environmental committee that one of our priorities is, is to start to inform our public of conserving water. We, we need to do it all over the world and I know at times people start to, to be a conservationist and somehow they fall off and I'm wondering if that's an opportunity that committee might consider that... consider that our environmental committee actually takes the lead on that.
Counselor Roydy Clemente, and then Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, just as a comment, I think there was some language in our last water budget that spoke to the mayor's point about when we adopted the budget, that we wanted to do some significant public outreach, and I think that would make sense in this circumstance. Through you, Madam Chair, a question for clarification on this. The 3.2 million operating surplus on the water side, does that include the 1.5 that we had already budgeted? For my purpose, when I think of having adopted the budget, I think of us having adopted the rate, and that we had planned to collect enough money for the 1.5 contribution to reserve. So in my mind, the three, I rounded up to 3.5, that was above and beyond the 1.5. But what really we're saying here is that the surplus is actually a $2 million surplus, if I can get that clarification, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
The 1.5 is included in the 3.4.
Okay, so that's a little bit less concerning to me then, now that I know, we've already budgeted for part of this, and that 1.2 million of that surplus is really and truly just a consumption, that we don't necessarily have the ability to budget for. I think the reality is that during last summer, we had a few thousand new lawns that were being established, and those were being watered, and that may, you know, that trend may continue, but we may not be able to budget for that. So from that circumstance, I think there's a good explanation for a lot of this, but I share Counselor Cronin and Mayor Haxson's concerns about collecting too much. I know we want to address that amortization gap of our assets, but at the same time, and I say this every time we look at the water budget, I'm concerned that we're going to the well, pun intended, too often with our residents. Thank you.
Any further comments from you on that, Mr. Valtchich, or no? You're okay? All right. Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. It's actually part of the terms of reference for the environment committee, I believe. I was trying to pull it up on here, but it's actually right in their terms of reference, that's something that we will be looking at. The environment committees have just had their first meeting, and they know that that's something that they'll be looking at. They had lots of great ideas, so please stand by, and it's definitely on their radar. I also want to thank you for the presentation. It was much easier to understand as you explained it than when we were reading it at home. I think that there's a lot to be done as far as education and understanding for constituents, understanding how the amortization works. It's a word that most people don't have in their everyday vocabulary, but they do understand pipes break, pipes need to be fixed, and I'm wondering if when this comes back, if we could have some more specific examples of the types of things that aren't being amortized, and it helps put that in people's minds. Thank you very much.
Can I get a motion to accept this? Counselor Foster? All in favor of that motion? Motion's carried. We have another item on the agenda under Corporate Services, and it's the Communications Branch memo updating of town logo. Mr. Valtchich?
Madam Chair, this is just an update for committee's information. Our communications staff have done some preliminary outreach. There's some of the responses to that outreach are contained within the memo, and I think the essence of the memo is sort of getting at that we have two issues. We have an issue with some overdue replacement priorities of some dilapidated signage within the town, and then we've got an issue of potentially updating the town logo. And I think we're suggesting here through the memo that we may want to, if we're going to pursue a logo update, that may take some additional time and some additional outreach, including potentially involving things like advisory committees, key advisory committees, and/or students that are in programs that might be able to provide creative input, as well as local artists and other stakeholders. So that's here, just for information and discussion, and we look forward to hearing what your comments are.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you, and thank you, Laura, for this report and the way that this is being handled. I think it's very easy for something like this to go off the tracks and end up in the $100,000 range, which is not what anyone at this table wants. I think that some of the pushback that we might be getting from residents is, we're using the word "updating" the town logo. The town doesn't really have a logo. We have a coat of arms, and I think we are looking for a town logo. And I think that if we kind of adjust our language around this, it might help people to understand. We're not getting rid of the coat of arms. As you say in your report, that will still be used in official capacity, but it's more a logo that helps people understand what EG is. And I love some of the samples that we've got already. I think there's great ideas to be had out there, and I look forward to this coming back, and I think all the work that you're doing will save us money in the long run for having to pay someone to go and do that outreach. So thank you very much.
Any further questions? Counselor Foster?
Just to kind of go along a little bit with what Counselor Cruthers just mentioned, one thing that jumped out at me here was 53% of the people have concerns. Now, I realize that's only on 60 individuals that replied, but I think that if we really push that idea that we're not creating to replace, we're just creating a logo, might make it a little bit easier for everybody to get along with. And again, we need to push the idea that this is not going to cost money. We're not going to bring, not a lot of money. We're not going to bring a bunch of trucks in to change the logo just because we have a logo now from what's there. You know, things can take time to go. But again, I think everybody needs to realize this is a newly created logo, not an update. Thanks.
Mr. Valtchich.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, certainly this is based on some preliminary outreach, and sample size reasonably small, although I think enough that we've had a general sense of what, you know, certainly more than a handful of folks are saying. And with respect to concerns, and the Director of Communications, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the majority of that was really just cautionary in relation to going out and spending excessive amounts of money to end up with a logo that residents might feel, how did that expenditure actually directly benefit me? And so that's the sense, and I think if we're going down this road, you've got some great staff that are able to work with interested parties in the community and our advisory committees, et cetera, and come back with hopefully some very good ideas and suggestions that might work well for us at a very modest cost.
Counselor Cronin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add, staff, I think maybe we might owe staff a bit of a, maybe an apology. We were starting a conversation about signage, and we took a hard left turn and got into talking about logos, and you guys were there to pick up all the plates as they were spinning. So I certainly appreciate that. I know, having gone through a couple of corporate redesigns and rebranding exercises in my past, I'll say today, as I did before, they can become unruly. Some people have very close ties to how we're identified, and so it is, it can be emotional for some. So I think we all need to recognize that as well. You know, I think it's good that we're making, putting our stake in the sand and saying, you know, we're holding tight on the funding that we're going to spend for this. And so I would say, as long as we can, and my colleagues have mentioned it, I think there's three things that we really need to emphasize with the public. This is a logo exercise. It is not a replacement exercise. The crest or the coat of arms will stay in place. It's, you know, heck, it's etched into the floor of our civic center here. It's not going away. You know, much like the government of Ontario or Canada, they have their coat of arms, their crest, they also have their own stylized logo. That's what they do. I think we need, the second point we need to reemphasize is that no funds have been allocated for this, that we're trying to do this as cost-effectively as we can. And I think the third criticism I heard on Facebook was, that I read, was that this was occupying all of our time, and that there were better things to do. And I just want to assure the people of East Colne Bay, this is not occupying all our time. We are maintaining the business of the town. So again, thank you to staff for running with this, and it's kind of evolved as we've gone long here, and I appreciate your journey on that evolution. Thank you.
Counselor Cruthers?
Not to occupy too much time, but just a quick follow-up. The other comment that I've heard is that if we don't put enough dollars into it, we're not going to do it well, and no one wants it not done well. So again, I compliment staff on finding that fine line, doing a lot of the work in-house, and maybe at the end, we need to be looking at a graphic designer to do it up really nice, but at a very low cost. This is not a rebranding exercise. I think we're very confident in our brand. I know that there is companies out there that rebrand because they want to take a turn from the past and what they were to what they're going to be, and I think that's another thing we need to communicate. This is not about rebranding. We know who we are, we want to continue who we are. But the comment I just wanted to end with was, you know, we have a common interest with the developers around here, that we want to make East Colne Bay as attractive as possible, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to be communicating with some of our development partners, that they may want to help kick in for that money that we're in need at the end for a graphic designer. Again, not making this into a bigger project than it needs to be, but just if we need a little bit of money to make sure that we have a professional graphics company look at our idea, maybe the developers would like to kick in with that, because I'm sure they would like us to look top quality. Thank you.
Could I get a motion to receive this memo? Counselor Roydy Clemente, all in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Mr. Valtchich, you have anything you would like brought up?
Nothing further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any members of committee have any other questions for Mr. Valtchich? Hearing none, I turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're under Item H. Normally would be Counselor Persicini in the chair. He is absent with notice, and there are no reports at this time. However, Mr. Carmerson, would there be anything from Community Parks Recreation Culture?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this time, Mr. Carmerson? Seeing none, we'll move to Item I, and that is Community Infrastructure and Environmental Services, with Counselor Cruthers in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have six prepared items for you today. The first one is a presentation on solid waste management, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Melonari to take us through this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pleased to have Larry Hollitt, our Director of Operations, here to provide us with an update to our waste management program. It's a good news story.
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. What we have for council today is a brief presentation on our waste management system. And what I'll be doing is providing an overview of the current collection contract and our partnership with the Northern Six municipalities, and then we'll be discussing the town's current waste collection contract, some of the challenges, and some future initiatives to deal with those challenges. So the current contract is the second collaborative Northern Six contract for waste collection. The first contract ran from 2007 to 2017, the first contract being a 10-year contract. So the second contract is an eight-year contract, and it has an annual value of about $10 million per year. So it's a huge contract, certainly something that we have a lot of carriage over. The town's portion, we currently budget about $1,003,000 for waste collection annually, and I'm pleased to report, and I think the finance report also identified this, that we had savings of about $300,000 in 2018. So that worked out very well for our residents. So as I mentioned, this is a second contract, and from lessons learned from the first contract, we've made some improvements. The most interesting one is really the call center that's managed by GFL. The next item that we have here is a delivery service by GFL for our residents. Actually, I'll talk a bit about the customer call center in later slides, but the bin delivery is something that our residents probably aren't aware of. So if a resident comes home from work and finds that the bin was broken during the collection process, the resident can call GFL and get a free bin delivered at no charge. So it's a really great service that we now have with this new contract. And we've included incentives in this contract, which didn't exist prior, and that's really the carrot approach to the service delivery model. We want the contractor to do a good job. And carryovers from the previous contract, liquidated damages, that's a stick approach. So if the contractor doesn't meet those performance measures, we can assess penalties. As noted above, the first two years of the contract were fixed rates, so the first contract increase is going to happen in 2020, and that's based on the CPI for 2019 to a maximum of 5%. So we can expect some increase in 2020. And one of the key promotional and educational tools that we use from the first contract, really valuable for us, that's messaging on the sides of the waste collection vehicle. So as you see the trucks go down the road, you see the messaging on the side of the truck. We use that. We update it every couple of years. It's a great tool. It's basically a rolling billboard that runs through all of our communities on every one of the roads. So it's a great tool that we have on all of those trucks, and I've noted here, 54 trucks with that messaging on there. So with respect to the call center, the KPIs for the call center were based on the Town of Newmarket's award-winning call center. They were very interested in making sure that the GFL call center matched Newmarket's award-winning call center. So they took the lead on that, developing the KPIs. I've put a few up on the screen here for council's interest. But the key point here is that GFL satisfied all of the contractual requirements and met all the KPIs for the call center in 2018, and actually achieved one of the incentives that I talked about earlier. So they did a very good job there. When we look at the number of calls received by East Colne Bay residents, we can see that from this chart, East Colne Bay residents had the lowest number of calls to the call center. That in itself doesn't mean a whole bunch, other than we might have lower population than some of the other municipalities, but we'd like to normalize that in a future report. And unfortunately, we didn't have time to do that for this report here. But going through the actual information that came through from the call reports, we had about 1,300 calls to the call center, and of those 1,300 calls, 350 were related to complaints. Now, that initially sounds like a big number, but when you divide that by 50 weeks, we're talking about seven complaints per week. And if you look at the number of collection points that the contractor makes, they're collecting about 10,000 collection points per week. So I always suggest that GFL is doing a very good job here, based on those numbers. When we move to the emails, again, a very low number. I think it was 72 emails that we received for the course of the year. Looking around the room, I'm sure some of us received that many emails in two or three days here in the office. So again, it's a reflection on how well the service is being provided. And again, this is something that we'd like to normalize, so that we know that we're sort of in the same range as the other municipalities moving forward. So the Northern Six has a longstanding relationship that's worked well for all the municipalities, but waste is one of these core services that we really don't want to get wrong. So to that regard, we had to develop a MOU between the municipalities, and the MOU basically defines the roles and responsibilities of the various parties. It also has a dispute mechanism, so if any of the municipalities have a dispute with the other, we have a tool in there. And it also talks about cost allocation for costs other than waste collection. But for certainty, all the waste that's collected in each municipality is paid for by that respective municipality. And one of the things I'd like to touch on here is tonnage. We don't collect by the collection point, we collect on the tonnage that's put into the truck. And we did that intentionally. We wanted the contractor to put as much material, I should say, collectible material... We wanted the contractor to put as much material, I should say, collectible material in the trucks as possible. So, really, as a truck goes down the road, there's no reason for them not to put material in the truck, they're getting paid for it. So, I talked about additional costs. Some of those additional costs, the advertising on the trucks, that's an additional cost. The call center, that's an additional cost. We have small operational stickers and all the OOP stickers when people put out the wrong stuff. And we have contracted services. And we have to share those costs. And how do we do that? We base it on the tonnage from the previous year. It's prorated. So, in this case, East Wilberly is trending about 10% of the total waste generated in the Northern Six. Therefore, our costs, these additional costs, we pay about 10%. So, I talked about contracted services. Last year, we actually employed a contract municipal relationship manager. That position is actually defined in our MOU. Basically, that's a, a contract administrator for the, the waste contract. And, and you can appreciate a $10 million contract per year, a lot of stuff happening, a lot of pieces going, piece, puzzle pieces to put together. This person is also responsible to deal with York Region if there's any transfer station issues or issues at the material recycling facilities. They chair quarterly meetings and they typically provide an update to the Northern Six CAOs. This past year, this individual happened to be in Australia, so I had the pleasure, along with Chris Calamutu from Newmarket, of presenting to the, the CAOs. So, do we have problems? Yeah, we, we do have problems sometimes. And this is where our municipal relationship manager steps in and tries to facilitate the discussions between the region, the contractor and the municipalities to come up with a solution. In this case here, GFL provided all-new collection fleet with the start of the new contract. And in this case, we had a problem with the, I'll use air quotes here, juice from the organics leaking into the recyclable materials. The current collection vehicle collects both the organics and the recycling in the same vehicle. So, through those discussions, the, the outcome was that all of the recycling and organics trucks were going to have to be retrofitted. So, this was an investment of $1.4 million. The contractor absorbed that cost, so the Northern Six and East Wilberly in particular, no cost for this retrofit. So, this is a really good news story. Not so good initially, but it's a good news story in the end. So, our waste collection program, it's remained largely unchanged since we started the organics program back in 2007 with the initial Northern Six collaborative contract. I like to refer to it as a residential curbside collection program. We provide unlimited recyclables and organic collection every week. We have a two-item, two-item limit for waste collection and that's every other week. You'll note I've got an asterisk there, it's kind of hard to see, but there's an asterisk. We'll talk about that later on in the presentation. We also have unlimited yard waste collection from April to November and that's every other week. We have a no-fee collection for white goods and bulky household items. The bulky household items might be a couch or a mattress or a whole bunch of these items at the side of the road. And as I mentioned, we have a residential curbside collection program because our bylaw currently excludes industrial, commercial, institutional and apartment buildings. So, it really is residential curbside. So, how do we convey this information to our residents? The primarily, primary and the first point of contact is usually our waste collection calendar. That goes out by bulk mail, usually late in the fall, in advance of the calendar year. We also provide these through direct delivery to our new residents before they take occupancy of the home. So, when they move into their home, they've got their recycle bins, their organics bins, their kitchen catcher and a waste calendar waiting for them when they move into the home. We maintain a presence on the town's website, so any information that's not in our calendars, residents can navigate to the website and get additional information there. And this is a really neat tool for those folks who are into technology and not so much the paper. It's a small application you can download for your smartphone, works on both Android and Apple. It's called the Recycle Coach. Basically, once it's downloaded, you type in your municipal address and it'll populate your calendar with all of your waste collection days, so you can get the kids out there to do the right garbage in the right days. And finally, York Region has a very good website. And one of the great tools on their website is this thing called the Bindicator. So, if you've got something and you don't know how to dispose of it and it's not on our website, you can go to the region site, plug it into this search button here. I'll try to pulse a wheelbarrow. You want to dispose of a wheelbarrow, you can plug that in there and very likely the region will spit out an answer where that wheelbarrow could go. So, earlier I mentioned we had a two-item garbage limit with an asterisk. The asterisk is our, our exemption list. 7% of the, the residents in town have an exemption to that two-bag limit. It's one of these legacy lists that we've maintained over the years. I don't think there's anyone around that really knows how it got started and who started it and why we're maintaining it, but we have a list. The contractor is required to maintain this list and only collect the extra items on the list. Doesn't always work that well. Now, one of the interesting things here as well is that this exemption list only applies to residents in the existing communities. We, to my knowledge, we haven't granted any exemption to the new development. So, you have the haves and the have-nots of the waste collection business here in town. If all of our exemptions put out the maximum waste that they could under this exemption, we're talking about $100,000 cost that all of the residents are subsidizing the 7%. So, it's, it's, it's really an issue about fairness, I, I believe. So, moving forward, we'd like to look at that exemption list, make sure that it's the right size, that it's validated, that people on the list actually should be on that list. And also, we'd like to introduce a bag tag system. This is really common in the waste industry. When we looked at York Region, six of the nine municipalities have a bag tag system in place. The, the tag ranges from anywhere a dollar up to about $3 for a bag tag. And some of the municipalities go $15 or $25 for the white goods or the larger items. So, obviously, if we had a tag system in place, we could reduce administration, get rid of this big list or pare it down substantially, improve efficiency by our contractor, really change the perception that we have the have and have-nots in our waste business and provide curbside disposals for our residents, options for those residents. Right now, the only option is to actually have our residents place that garbage out for collection. If it gets picked up, great. If it doesn't, the residents required to haul that waste to a regional transfer facility. So, there's not really many options for our residents at this point. And for those residents that actually haul it to a transfer facility, sometimes they make a pit stop and it ends up as roadside dumping. It's just the nature of the business. Here's an example of a waste set out in one of our new developments. And you can see the contractor's already gone by. He's picked up two bags of waste and he's put a sticker on there. That's one of the OOP stickers we talked about earlier. And so, this resident has to somehow dispose of this waste. And really, the only option at this point, because we don't have a tag system, is they've got to load that in their vehicle and take it to a transfer facility. And I really hope they have something other than a small sedan. It's not going to fit in that car. This is an example of a recycling setup that wasn't collected. Again, we've got residents coming from another municipality that I assume accepted recyclables and bags. We don't do that here. So, it's a, it's an improvement that we can make in the promotion and education. And this is where we could potentially put updated information on the sides of our trucks. This is actually an example of a bulky household item setup. We collected this waste. I know it looks like roadside dumping, but this is because we don't have a limit on our bulky items, we were required to collect this at curbside. So, it's, it's one of those things. So, in summary, GFL's been providing a great level of service. They've met all the contract requirements in the first, first year of this contract. They're collecting about a half million collection points over the course of the year. They're doing a lot of work out there. And we did have a problem early on in this contract. It's being addressed by the contractor. We expect to have all the trucks retrofitted by the end of this year, an investment of $1.4 million, huge investment by the contractor to make sure that the right material gets to the right place and is not contaminated. And finally, GFL, the Northern Six, we continue to do our best to improve the system, to provide the highest level of service to our residents. So, with that...
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I just wanted to clarify one point around the bag tags they're talking about, just for the over and above, not tags for everyone. So, that was a question I had when I first saw this. So, I, I really liked this presentation and I thought that the chart that, in our package here that showed how much green bin material is being collected is, is really significant. And I also liked the concept of tags, especially when you started talking about dumping. And I think that's absolutely right, especially if someone puts their garbage out, it gets wet, now they don't want to put that in their car and, and take it somewhere else. So, I think offering the tags at a reasonable rate will help cut down on dumping. I'm, as, as you know, I'm, I'm in a rural area and we get bags of garbage constantly out there where people have just dropped them off on the side of the road. So, I, I appreciate that. Anyone on the committee? Okay, we'll start with Councilor Foster.
Great presentation, answered a lot of questions. Just a couple of comments. The, the Bindicator idea is fabulous, that needs to be advertised to the residents like crazy. I think that'll answer a lot of questions. You mentioned the Recycle Coach app. I have been using it, although I've had to download it, I think about three times now. It just quit working, so I'm not sure whether that's probably my phone, my old phone. Options for the residents obviously is, is good because you get that extra garbage left over and how do you get rid of it? One thing that I did want to bring up, and I might be getting ahead of myself here, I had a great conversation with a resident that had a concern about household batteries and the fact that you have to take them to a regional facility. During the conversation, he mentioned, I think Niagara region somewhere that has a program going now within their recycle program where household batteries and that type of thing are picked up. I think they may be doing it with municipal employees, which would be an awful drag on the, on the workforce. But is there a possibility that next time this contract gets looked at, that, you know, maybe something like that should be mentioned on a, maybe a Northern Six basis to work in with that program? Thanks.
Certainly through you, Madam Chair. We actually have a clause, I believe, in our contract now for battery collection. I'm just going to turn here for a second and look at Jeff. He's shaking his head up and down. So, we do have that in the contract and that, that's something that we can work into our program. It's just the logistics behind that are somewhat difficult, but we can, we can work on that. And maybe that's one of the issues that we can bounce over to our environmental advisory committee. One of our team actually sits on that, so we can, we can work with our staff on that initiative.
Wonderful. That's a, a great point about the batteries. I noticed Lowe's, there's a place where you can drop them off at Lowe's and maybe the solution is looking for more of those drop-off centers in, in town buildings, the library, sports complex, that sort of thing. If we made it easier for people to drop them off themselves, that might be the cheapest way to get that done. Councilor Morton?
Thank you. I like the idea of the, the, the broken bins being replaced. Have we actually told the residents that? Because I mean, quite often, they're not going to be standing there seeing anything written on the side of the trucks, at least not in my neighborhood. I've never seen anybody standing doing that and I certainly haven't noticed it. But the other thing that I do like and I would like to, to comment on is the consideration of the drivers or, or the other staff that are on the trucks on how they actually put the bins and the green bins back on your property. I mean, when you go up and down my street after the garbage has been picked up, everything is put right back and it's, it's not thrown out in the middle of the, the, you know, property and that. So, maybe you can pass that along to, to the drivers and they can pass that along to whoever might be helping them that day because it is, it's, it's considerate of them to do that, rather than leaving on the side of the road or tossing them here and there and makes things a lot easier when you go out to pick them up, especially in the pouring rain.
And through you, Madam Chair, that's actually a contract requirement. That was one of the things that when we looked at the contracts, we wanted to make sure that our residents, the bins weren't being damaged after the delivery, or pardon me, after the delivery, after the collection of the waste. And that's actually a contract requirement. So, if they don't do that, we have the liquidated damages. So, they do a great job. I'll agree with you and I'll pass that information along to the contractor.
Thank you. I've certainly noticed a change in the last number of years. It used to be that they would leave them right in the middle of my driveway, so I had to stop on the busy road and get out and move them so I could pull into my driveway. And it certainly hasn't been that way in a number of years, so, well done. Councilor Roy DeClemente and then the, the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I think I'm going to echo what some other members of committee said, if there's a way for us to, to help publicize that free delivery service. I think I certainly wasn't aware of it and I tend to keep a couple of copies of the waste collection calendar in my house so that I can hand to neighbors who are new or new, new tenants that I happen to come across who may not have the benefit of our new stuff. As far as the, the sort of other items, I think our diversion rates could be, could be looked at if we not only looked at, at batteries, but also textiles and electronics. And I know we've talked about that in the past and that may be able, a way for us to reduce some of our expenses if we've got a way to divert some of those materials away from landfill. I know we've talked about the bag tag program and the exemption list in the past and I would, I'm really keen to see some movement, especially on that exemption list, because there, that is a significant expense to our community and I'm not sure how some of those people got on that list. There's, there's obviously some legacy issues that we need to address and, and I'm keen to see both of those issues addressed. The bag tag one is one that comes up a tremendous amount of time. Just as far as, as feedback, you, your data on call volumes into the GFL, call center are great. It's nice to see that our residents appear to be happy with the service. I wonder if our customer care department is also tracking waste-related calls? Because it may be that some of those calls are being diverted directly to the town first and maybe we're able to address those questions. So, I wonder if we could, if you're doing a little bit more data crunching through you, Madam Chair, that maybe you would have a, a sense of, of what's happening here at our own call center and that may be contributing to some of the statistics. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. As far as I know, all of our customer care folks are direct, directing those calls directly through to our contractor. And the only time they're touched again is if the, the resident is unhappy with the approach with the GFL call center and then they'll bounce back to us. And then, in that case, work order is prepared and typically, looking back at Jeff, Jeff gets stuck addressing them and, and quite often, they're all managed within 24 or 48 hours.
Okay, thank you. And I'll also mention that the environment committee brought up about textile recycling too, so they're looking at it. When I was out in King a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that they, at their community center, they had the great big textile recycling bins, so that may be something that we can look at as well. Mayor Haxson?
Thank you very much. Thank, thank you for the report. Excellent. As long as I've been on council, the, the new format that we have with GFL is, is excellent compared to where we were. I, I applaud everybody that's involved with it and I know Jeff, you're heavily involved with it as well. It, it has made a tremendous difference from a political end on the phone calls that we used to get, pretty much on a regular basis. I think the fact that they have cameras at, at each stop, they, you can call at any time and say, this didn't get picked up and you go back and you find out that the truck was there or there was nothing at the curb. And I think that's really important as well. It, it, it puts everybody on notice. I wanted to speak about the, you glossed over briefly about an increase in 2020 and I wanted to speak about that and ask, I'm assuming that the weight now that, that we have has increased since the contract started and therefore, in 2020, we would anticipate based on tonnage, that, that our, our contract would increase with, with that in mind. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. We can anticipate additional waste being collected as we grow. However, we did budget about $1,003,000 and it, and our contract cost came in for 2018 about $1 million. So, I would suggest that as we budget for 2020, even with the increase, we're probably okay maintaining the current budget that we have in place.
Okay, that's good. The tags for me, a great idea, hear about it all the time. The tags for me, great idea, hear about it all the time. It may not be that people use it on a regular basis, but there's always those family parties and Christmas time, et cetera, where there is extra garbage and people have a hard time getting rid of it and particularly if it's summer events, it's tough to leave it sitting at home waiting for the next week. So appreciate that. The exemption list, I wanted to ask a question if they are tied to the household or are they tied to the address?
That's an interesting question. Yeah, we have a list of addresses and the exemption beyond the two-bag limit for that particular property.
I wonder if we have an opportunity, the way that real estate seems to be changing hands in East Quillumberry, both new and not so new, that if it was tied to the household and not to the address, we may be able to diminish those numbers along the way. There obviously was a reason, a legacy, as someone has said over time, that there was a reason why, but was it the lifestyle of those in the household or some extenuating circumstance that once the house is sold, perhaps it's not there anymore and now we're just caught in that agreement that was made many years ago. And I'm not sure how we could do it. I know that when it comes to sales, we know from the tax department of our municipality that the people know when a house has been sold and changed its hands. So it may be a lot of work, but if this is a big problem, maybe it's going to, it would be worth it.
Through the chair. I believe really the exemption list was a result of having no bag tag system. If there's no way to dispose of waste other than to give an exemption, that list is going to grow. We really need to do some work on that list and the starting point is going to be the interesting part.
We don't want it to grow. We want it to diminish. So I'm sure there's lots of ideas and look forward to seeing how we can tackle that one. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my understanding that we would replace the exemption list with bag tags and that some people would get their bag tags for free if they had a reason why they had a medical condition that was producing a lot of garbage or something along those lines. And so I think that would help address exactly what the mayor's talking about, that if people have to come in and get their bag tags, then it's going to, we're going to hopefully have them fill out something or something to show that they need them.
Yeah, that's certainly one model to get rid of the list completely. At this point, I'm not willing to make that offer.
Okay.
I think it's something that we need to do a little bit of work on.
Excellent.
To right-size the list, whether it means completely banning it and then providing bag tags in place, that would be better from an operational perspective.
Okay, thank you. And if there's no other, oh, Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the presentation. You know, the collection of garbage is just one of those core town services that we have to get right and I am delighted to hear that our standards of service are falling within our contract guidelines. So I'm glad to hear that. The only thing I would just add is that I am very, having, you know, living on Concession Road, I am very conscious of the fact that roadside dumping is a big issue in this town. Back, I think back in 1990, when I was a founding member of the Environmental Services Committee, it was an issue we looked at then and it's still here. And I would just suggest to staff, I would be delighted to hear at some point in the future, suggestions, ideas, strategies that we can use to combat roadside dumping. I've had a bag of garbage dumped in the front of my house. I dug through it, found out who it belonged to. The police came and they couldn't do a darn thing because they didn't see it happen in the act. So it's unacceptable for people and it was from outside of our community as well. It was from the community, I think, that has bag tags. Anyway, I would just suggest to staff that at some point, we need to, in the very near future, have a discussion around strategies for reducing roadside dumping. Thank you.
Thank you. I would agree 100%. I had the pleasure of having to pick up a broken bag of adult diapers. So there's, I wasn't digging through for an address, let me tell you. I have one question, if there's nothing else from the committee. Why do we not allow recycling bags?
Excellent question. From a collection standpoint, from the town's perspective, we would love to be able to accept bags for recyclables that reduce litter. Unfortunately, the region doesn't have the mechanisms within their recycling facility to de-bag and to be able to sort that material.
Okay.
Anything that shows up in bags at the recycling facility goes right into garbage.
Okay. That's, it's good to know. It's unfortunate because we do get a lot of problems with stuff blowing around.
Agreed.
Anyways, there's no other questions on this one. We have a resolution to, for the presentation to be received. Does anyone move that? Counselor Foster, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. The next two items are tender awards. I'll turn this over to General Manager Molinari to take us through.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first report is for the tender award of a loader. It's a highly-used piece of equipment. It would be an additional loader to complement the one we have right now. And the real timing for this is to have it in place for this upcoming winter. And, you know, in discussions with our operations manager, we expect a delivery within about 60 to 90 days, so there's lots of time in order to have that in place for this winter. The second report is with regards to a tender award for a number of vehicles and we're, as part of this report, we're recommending a award of two growth-related vehicles. So five of the vehicles were replacements and we're looking to hold those vehicles until our fleet strategy is in place and looking to bring that to council over, hopefully over the next month or two for your review. So in the meantime, our recommendation was to proceed with award of the growth-related vehicles so that we can ensure that those staff that need those vehicles to support their daily activities have them and while the existing vehicles continue to be used for a number of, for the next coming months until we put another tender out that incorporates the feedback from that fleet strategy.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question relates to the vehicular, not the loader. Through our budget process for 2019, staff came to us and said that they needed to replace or they needed to purchase seven trucks. And fast forward a few months and all of a sudden, we only need to purchase two. And this concerns me frankly because if the budget process has, we do some due diligence through that budget process and we say we need to purchase because these vehicles have reached their end of life or we need, we've got staff that are coming online and they need a place, and they need a vehicle to get to work, to their work site and so on, why we wouldn't be following through on that? So if these were approved through our budget, why we wouldn't be following through? Or on the contrary, why would we only just, why would we have approved seven when we only really needed to approve two?
Thank you. I'll turn that over to General Manager Molinari, but my understanding is it has to do with the length of the time from, of course, they can't start on it until the budget's approved and there's a lot of work that goes into tendering it, et cetera, and that we will have more of these coming up, the budgets for the entire year, so the rest of them will be coming forward, I believe. But General Manager Molinari, do you have something to say on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly, we're at council's discretion on this report and what gets awarded. But certainly, we've spoken with the fleet manager and we're not looking at deferring the vehicles for a significant amount of time. It could be something that gets re-tendered this fall or it could be something that gets re-tendered shortly thereafter. So we were really just trying to be mindful of our fleet strategy and some changes that may come through as part of that process and really just to, you know, make sure that the vehicles that we do have, we're not at risk of those vehicles having catastrophic failure at any point over the next couple of months. So we feel that it's something that we could wait until that fleet strategy is in place and then either re-tender on the heels of that or wait until maybe September or the spring of next year at the latest.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just further, Madam Chair, it seems to me then that we may have wasted staff's time in preparing this tender in the first place if we weren't going to award the five vehicles that aren't on the tender. If we were unhappy with the prices we got, that would be one thing. If we were going to be waiting because there was a fleet strategy prepared, I don't know why we would have gone to tender in the first place. So I guess at this point, I'm fine to move forward with the two vehicles. Frankly, if we don't have to purchase something, I'm fine with that if we can save some money in the short term, create some gapping savings, I'm good with that. But I will say that for our future budget processes, staff can be aware of it, I'll be asking a lot more questions when it comes to new vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. General Manager Molinari, when will the fleet strategy be coming to council?
We expect within the next two months.
Thank you. Any other questions on these two items? So this is I, two and three, and we have two resolutions to accept these two reports and two resolutions to award the contracts as outlined in I, two and, sorry, three and, no, two and three. I was right the first time, two and three. Can I have someone move those four recommendations? Mayor Haxson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Moving along to number four, this is about pedestrian crossovers, which I have had confirmed is the same thing as a crosswalk. So over to you, Mr. Molinari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This particular project or report is recommending a new pedestrian crossover, which is, as you mentioned, the new terminology for crosswalks. There's been some legislative changes over the last couple of years, to the point where we actually have to include pedestrian crossovers in our bylaws in order to set the framework to be able to enforce for them and have them in place. So this report does two things. It gets the approval to adjust our bylaw in order to incorporate pedestrian crossovers and it also recommends our first one for implementation on Center Street at Mill Street.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Counselor Morton.
Not a question, just a comment. I think this will, due to the fact of the complaints that we get about the speeding down Center Street all hours of the day, I think that this may be able to slow down some of those vehicles and I certainly hope that it will be being put in fairly soon.
Thank you. Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess for me, I wanted to speak a little bit about the Vivian Creek and Center area. I understand that warrants weren't met at this time. I think, given the proximity of two rather important and large municipal assets, being Ross Family and the park and even the trail system in that area, I think patterns for pedestrians would change and fluctuate based on weather and the study was done at the end of November. And I know that this area is also going to be subject to some significant development and maturation with commercial and residential structures planned for the area. So what I'd like to suggest, and I'll make a motion to that effect, Madam Chair, is that we amend the resolution here to direct staff to continue to monitor traffic and pedestrian patterns in the area of Vivian Creek and Center Street as the area develops and matures and report back on any recommendations so that should something change, that we would be in a position to install that pedestrian crosswalk because, again, it creates a link even just during the summer or if the daycare, if the daycare crossed the street to go to the library that day, you might have met warrants. But if that was a day that they didn't cross, then you didn't meet your warrants. So I know that that's an area that certainly deserves further study. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, just to see a nod of heads, is there any opposition to adding that on? I think it's a great idea and I think you're absolutely right. It depends on what day they do the counts. I've had some concerns in Homelanding about kids crossing from the variety store over to the new skate park and would like to take a look at whether it would warrant a crosswalk there. And I think it would be very different if it was a cold day in February or a PA day or a summer day, whether or not we would meet those warrants. So I think you're right, we should continue to monitor that. Is there any other questions for anyone on this? Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just if I may ask, how close was the numbers for, by Vivian Creek? Because I ask, we have two new developments coming in with Averton, significant number of folks coming in there. There's a commercial component to that as well. On the other side of the street, there's a new development going in as well. So if the numbers were close and we know that there's going to be more residents in the area, why don't we just say, all due respect to Counselor Roy DiClemente's motion, why don't we just, if it's close, why don't we just do it?
I believe in the report, it shows it's not even close. It's, they need 100 and there's only 15 pedestrians going across, so we're a long ways off on that. Anything to add to that, Mr. Molinari?
You are correct. It's at about 15% of its warrant value. However, as mentioned, this is an area to watch. So as the area develops, there will be more pedestrian activity out there and, you know, we'll certainly be doing more counts out there and as that area matures and there's additional traffic, foot traffic, et cetera, I'm sure it'll be something at some point where it will likely meet warrants.
And we more than meet the warrant for vehicle traffic and kind of wonder if it's a chicken and egg thing, if more people would be crossing, would be walking across the road if they, chicken crossing the road, yeah. All kinds of levels to this comment. No, if it was safe for people to cross, I wonder if more people would walk across. So, you know, you got to wonder about that too. Anyways, we have a three-part resolution before us with the addition, additional resolution to continue to monitor and Mr. Clerk, has that been sent to you so that you have that? Also, can I have someone to move those four recommendations? Counselor Roy DiClemente? Any questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. We now move on to number five, water meter replacement program. Mr. Molinari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an update on our water meter replacement program. Back in 2017, staff began a replacement of old meters, water meters with new water meters with RFID capabilities, meaning that we no longer have to have, once they're all installed, we'll no longer have to have somebody manually walk down the street in order to pick up the meter readings. It could all be done remotely and fairly intelligently. And even earlier on in the presentation through GM Belichick's area this morning, or this afternoon, talked about some of the ways that we may be able to become more efficient with our systems and with this data and knowing the information as it comes in, we may be able to identify areas where there may be significant water leakage, et cetera, and which will be able to allow us to, you know, maybe inform our residents when there is a problem on their particular site. So as we mature and we get better technology and infrastructure in place, these all things start to work together and provide better service delivery to our residents.
Thank you. We have a motion here to receive this report. Is there any questions? Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a suggestion that the report suggests that after four notices, that we would hand-deliver a fifth notice that says that we would be turning off the water and proceeding with the steps outlined in the report. Just a suggestion that if four notices that are hand-delivered wasn't effective, I'm wondering whether we might take that fifth notice and make it a registered letter. I think that if we're going to go to the expense of turning off the water and have to deal with that, that it's justifiable to send a registered letter, especially if it's possible that those addresses are tenanted properties and the tenant thinks that it's the landlord's responsibility, but the communication is not getting to them. I think having a registered letter just allows us that much more customer service to say, yeah, we turned your water off after we sent you a registered letter, rather than we stuck a note in your door. I think, just that suggestion. I don't know if that needs to be just direction to staff, but just from my perspective, that might be helpful.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding of heads. Counsel, I mean, General Manager Molinari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a discussion about this a couple of weeks back with regards to how, what's the most efficient way for us to move forward on this? And certainly, a registered letter has some benefits, but there's also administration and costs that goes along with that. And it's one of those ones where there's really no perfect solution. And discussions with our operations manager, our ability to just go out and turn the water off, our staff are out there anyway, they have an active water meter replacement program going on in that area, and it may sound like it's operationally difficult or time-consuming to do that, but it really is. It's just like turning off a tap. It takes, it doesn't really take much time to do that. And so we could go the route of registered letters, but at the same time, that registered letter doesn't guarantee the end result of getting that tenant or that homeowner to call the town in order to schedule a meter replacement. So there's benefits, and it may work in some situations, but it won't work at all, and there's no magic bullet to do, to make sure that everything gets done in the most efficient way. So we're happy to try, if counsel wishes, or just keep it as one of the items in our toolbox for areas that we may be having difficulty with.
Thank you. I think it's a great suggestion, and maybe something to keep in the toolbox. I think it's being presented that way, if I'm correct. We don't need a motion on that, but just let staff know that that's something that could be done. We have this here for receipt. Someone to move that motion? Anyone? Counselor Morton, thank you. Any more questions? Counselor Foster? Go ahead.
Just a very quick comment. Mr. Molinari, you can probably answer this in one word. Again, had a conversation with a resident that was concerned that there was a possibility that during the change of the water meter, there could be repairs that would result in a cost incurred to the homeowner. I know we're reasonable people, and we wouldn't be throwing cost at the homeowner if we didn't have to. I guess my question is, has there been any instances where during this water meter change, anything has happened, anything else is broken that would incur a cost towards the homeowner?
Through you, Madam Chair. Really, I'm not aware of any of those instances. Really, the meter replacement is free of charge. It's really not, we're not trying to incur any costs or recoveries through that. We're just trying to get the meter changed out. So the guys are there, they'll do what they need to do to get the job done, unless there's something that's, you know, way out of the ordinary that warrants that.
Thank you. Just looking for a little bit of help in answering those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to staff. About how many, approximately how many folks have not received their meter yet?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe we're somewhere in the order of 1,200 staff, or 1,200 residents, but that's not just in the Manalbert area, that's townwide.
1,200 residents have not received their meter?
No, I think you're asking how many problematic addresses.
I, sorry, if I'm not clear. I just want to know, how many people have we been trying to get at that we haven't successfully been able to get their meter installed?
Go ahead, Mr. Molinari, whoever wants to answer it. Anybody, call a friend.
Go ahead, Mike. I think out of last year's program, we've got about 60 properties that are still, we're having challenges getting the meter changed out. So this current year, we're planning on doing the 1,200 meters that Mike had mentioned in the Homelanding area, and we've, I think, got around 400 meters changed out to date on that program. So next year, we'll have probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm just guessing at this point, 1,500 to 1,600 meters in next year's program, so it's going to be a big program next year.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Crone?
Yeah, no, I appreciate where you're coming from now. I would strongly encourage you to make use of the registered letter process. Again, back in my insurance days, that's what we did when we were going to terminate somebody's policy or take effective action. We sent them a registered letter so that there was no, I didn't get any notice of this, there's, you can't, there's a signature, you can't claim ignorance. Because at the end of the day, if it gets cut off, it's the folks on this side of the table that are going to hear about it the loudest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this has been moved by Counselor Morton. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And last but not least, for this section, we have a presentation on traffic and parking bylaw review. Mr. Molinari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to introduce Denny Biskowski, our manager of asset management and capital projects, and Jennifer Nichols, our parking and bylaw supervisor. They have a presentation on our ongoing traffic and parking bylaw update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Back on May 15, 2018, council received a joint report from Emergency and Community Safety Services and C.I.S. entitled Parking Bylaw Review. From that report, we provided an update on the review as of that time. We confirmed parking prohibitions be exempted from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., except during winter clearing operations, confirmed that further public consultation will be conducted regarding proposed on-street parking permit program with affected residents, and report the results, and confirmed that the traffic and parking bylaw be consolidated. Since then, we have been moving on all of those fronts, and today, we're here to update you on some further public consultation we would like to do. And with that, I'll ask Jennifer to speak to what that is.
Madam Mayor, members of council, currently, just, currently, we have our parking bylaw that is over 15 years old, and currently needs some housekeeping and some updating to it. As a result of that, the staff have worked very hard at drafting up a new consolidated traffic and parking bylaw. Part of that will be a public consultation to discuss some of the proposed changes to the new bylaw. So firstly, it would be, we currently have a temporary overnight parking permit available to residents. What we're proposing is, we're looking into online payment for parking tickets, as well as proposal to have a fee associated with those temporary parking permits. Standardized signage for fire access route. Currently, our bylaw does not have them defined, so basically, it would give you better clarity and more consistency with every fire route that is put up in East Gomberie would require those requirements for that. The new changes for the parking prohibition would be the 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. This would provide residents better clarity with what the parking provisions are. Included with that would be the commercial vehicles on a highway within a residential zone. These are all addressed through different complaints and issues that we've had to deal with over the years, and trying to manage those. So currently, our current parking bylaw does not address commercial vehicles on the roadway, so this new one would. Better clarity for vehicles found overhanging onto the roadway and sidewalk. Currently, the violation, if you're overhanging onto the roadway, is interfering with traffic. This new bylaw would be clearer, indicating just basically anything overhanging onto the roadway, and that would be it. And vehicles interfering with highway cleaning operations. In addition to these proposed changes, our increase in our current set fines that haven't been increased since the bylaw was passed in 2003. So a environmental scam was done on various other municipalities, which found that our fines were two to three times lower, so that's certainly something that we need to look at, increasing. With that, would help with, act as a deterrent with the higher fines. In addition to that, we're looking at introducing an early payment option. So if you do receive a ticket, you could come in within seven days and get that ticket reduced for that. So I just was, I'm just going to do just an overview of some of the parking issues that we currently have in East Gomberie. Interfering with snow removal, certainly a popular one. And here is our overhang onto the sidewalk, causing our plows some grief. So it just, it doesn't have to be overhanging a lot, just a little bit of the bumper, and it causes some issues with the plows and effectively clearing the snow from that area. Again, just an overview, fire route, more consistency with signage across the board. Laneway parking is another issue with these new developments in parking. More clarity within the bylaw to indicate that anything overhanging onto that curb and onto that laneway and roadway will result in a ticket. Boulevard parking is becoming increasingly an issue, just due to the lack of parking for some of these residents. Sidewalk obstruction, park facing wrong way. Difficult to see, but I was trying to show just a snapshot of a street in town here where, very narrow, you've got vehicles parked on both sides, you've got some overhanging onto the roadway, obviously some hazards, and then we're getting those complaints of just that little bumper overhanging onto the sidewalk is causing issues also in the winter, but also with, I get complaints of their children can't go down the sidewalk riding their bikes. So certainly, issues with that. So next up, what we're proposing is to carry out some public consultation. We have already worked with communications to get a survey in place, so that's, that can be ready to go. And of course, we would report back to council with the results of that survey, of the proposed changes. Yep, and then prepare to seek approval for the new consolidated traffic and parking bylaw. So that's new as well. So currently, we do have a traffic bylaw and a parking bylaw. The proposal is to consolidate the two, again, to make it easier for residents to get the information they need in one document. Questions?
Wonderful, thank you. Questions from anybody? Counselor Foster?
A quick question on, you know, the picture you had there, and we all know that the plows driving around parked cars during snow events is a problem. What is the procedure there? When, I guess what I mean to say is, when is there an immediate fine versus a warning?
Through the chair? There is immediate fine. We do work jointly with the C.I.S. department, so we do have radios with us, and the plows will notify us on the radio if they're having any issues. Our officers will go out to address it, and tickets issued. There's no warnings.
So then, if I can, when does the next step take place, that the tow truck comes and gets it out of the way so you can clear the road?
Generally, we issue two tickets, two to three tickets, and then a notice, a tow notice is issued on the vehicle. And we have towed this year two vehicles that were interfering, so.
Thank you. Mayor Haxson?
Thank you very much. I'm interested in the survey and how we're going to get to the right people. I know that in many cases, it's new residents with smaller lots, and I'm just wondering what plan we have to make sure that we get input from them.
So in addition to the public consultation that we intend to do through our social media website, I did, during the open house, I did reach out to residents that were, to advise them of the proposal. As well as, I do offer first attendance where you come in to dispute tickets. I also, I'm getting some feedback from residents that are getting the tickets. And one of the feedback was actually quite positive. He's come to get a ticket, he's gotten a ticket, and he was quite positive with the 2:00 to 6:00. Again, that clarity of what's permitted and what's not coming into the municipality. So it would be with, working with the communications group in getting that message out.
I wonder, what is the timing on closing the opportunity to consult?
Generally, we have it out for two weeks, and then I would compile the results, and then a joint report would come back with the results of that.
Thank you.
Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to staff. You know, I appreciate this, no one likes having to get a ticket, and I'm sure you don't enjoy issuing them. And so I understand it is limited mostly to the smaller properties. That seems to be where the prevalent fines are being issued. Two comments. I think with all things, the more communication we do, the better, the help people understand why we're doing it, and letting them know what the, what all the, you know, the terms of the bylaws are. But secondly, I would, I have to, I have to wonder if we're, if in some way, the town is not complicit in this as well, with our, the way we plan some of our communities. And maybe, I would hope that there's some information sharing between departments so that when new communities come in and want to be developed, that we make sure that we avoid things like this in the future, so that we give everyone enough space to park their cars and not hang over the sidewalks. So just a comment, I hope that information sharing is going on, that we can hopefully avoid this in the future. Thank you.
Other questions from members of the committee? I had a couple of comments. First of all, I think this is wonderful, merging these two into one bylaw. I'm wondering if, do you know, do we have certain streets that are bigger offenders than other streets? And I'm wondering, when I'm hearing about how we communicate this, I'm wondering if there's certain streets we might want to go door-to-door with giving them that information that they need. Because I think a lot of the times, the people don't understand, and maybe, you know, targeting certain streets with some educational brochures might help.
The chair. Yes, certainly, that, we can certainly look into doing that, as well as the new home guide, too. We can provide some information as well on that.
That's good. I worry with parking, there's certainly the haves and the have-nots, and it goes to Counselor Crone's question with, about planning. And I think there's people that have, you know, a nice big two-car garage and enough place to park their cars, and other people who are in a townhouse that might have the garage right out onto the alleyway. So I think when we look at the results of this survey, it's one thing for the people who have the parking and say therefore no one should park on the streets, another thing for those people who don't have adequate parking and are looking for solutions. So I want to make sure that when we're doing this, we're making sure that we're serving our residents that bought a home without enough parking. And I think this is going to become a bigger issue as our community ages. We know that people who move into new homes tend to have young children, and as they grow and get their licenses, and now it's not just the two cars that they have when they bought the house, now they have four cars, or maybe even five cars if they have three kids. And it's going to become more of a problem. So to Counselor Crone's point, I think we absolutely need to be looking at planning going forward, making sure that there's sufficient parking, making sure those boulevards aren't just, you know, one foot too short to get a car onto, that either they're, it's not reasonable to put a car there, or you can get a car there, but these ones are right in between. I also worry about, coming forward in another presentation, we're talking about basement units, I worry about the parking that goes along with that, too. So I think we really have to be careful when we're planning that there's enough street parking, because I don't think there's ever going to be a place where we have enough parking for everyone on their own lot. So thank you for that. If there's no other questions, I don't see any. Can we get a motion to receive the presentation? Counselor Crone? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. And I'll turn, oh, actually, I'll ask Mr. Molinari if you have anything to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple items. Essentially, Essentially, this is, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on, it's, it's National Public Works Week this week, and this year's theme is, it starts here. And I just wanted to let council know that our, some of our staff are actually at, at an event today representing the town against some other municipalities. And we'll find out a little later on how, how well they did. But I just wanted to, to let council know that, that this is National Public Works Week.
Thank you. I also think there was an item in the minutes that said a letter was going to come back to this meeting, addressed to MPP Mulrooney, and that's been put off till the next meeting. Just wasn't enough turnaround time for staff to get that together. Is there anything, any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, I'll turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're under item J with Development Services with Counselor Crone in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two, two items on the agenda today. The first is a report, Development Services Planning Branch report, Regional MCR and Town Official Plan Update. General Manager Ramuno, do you like to enlighten us?
Thank you, Chair Crone. So the first report is the Regional MCR, which is their official plan update, and our, our own town official plan update report. And, and some of the recommendations in the report, just to cut to the chase, essentially are, are that, my recommendation to council at this point in time is to, you know, endorse the inclusion of the remainder of the white belt lands within the town, and that recommendation be forwarded to the region so they can then inform their own process that they're undergoing now, regional staff, with respect to doing their land budget. In addition, that I would report back to council with a more detailed work plan on the, on our requirement to update our official plan. So that's it, to bring that in conformity with the, with the new growth plan amendments and the regional official plan when that is adopted in 2020 or 2021. And in addition, that we would, I report back on consultation plan as well as the detailed secondary plans that would be required to identify the actual future development within those urban expansion areas. There is a lot of information in, in the report, and I'll certainly answer any questions. But the one thing to keep in mind is that back in 2010, when we did our last, when the town did their last OP update and their, we went through a growth management exercise, these white belt lands that we're talking about, those lands in between the communities of Holland Landing, Queensville, and Sharon, were identified as required for long-term buildout at that time. And so I think it's, it's critical that we, we move forward and recommend to the region that they be included during this round of their OP updates. So we, we then, the municipality, can do, do the detailed work to identify, you know, how those areas are going to grow to the new planning horizon of 2041 and beyond, and to ensure that we do have our complete and proper planned communities, and that the infrastructure and financial investments required are coordinated to implement that long-term buildout of our municipality as originally identified.
Okay, thank you very much, General Manager. Can I have a mover for this? Move by Mayor Haxson. Do we have any questions from committee? Mayor Haxson?
Thank you. This certainly makes sense to me in light of some challenges we've had in other areas. So I, I can certainly support this. How many acres or hectares would the white belt entail?
Certainly through you, Chair Crone. You know, my estimate at this point is, is approximately 3,000 acres. And again, that's sort of, you know, in its entirety, but moving forward, we'll have to do, you know, a detailed analysis with respect to how much of that, not all of that will be developable. There will be some lands within those white belt areas that, you know, are environmentally significant and would be protected, but that would be identified during the detailed secondary plan process. But approximately 3,000.
Those properties that would be environmentally protected, would that be significant or would it be minimal as far as the 3,000 acres?
So you, Mr. Chair, no, it's probably, probably on the lower end. On a broad scale, if I refer you, refer you to the appendix, the three appendixes, the appendices that were attached to the report, it's really the, the lands identified in green as part of the natural heritage system scattered throughout. So, you know, just as a percentage, it's, you know, probably at the, at the lower end.
Thank you.
Counselor Crone, Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions, and then I'd like to, to make a stay, an observation. What is the proposed cost to the municipality, to E.G., for this process, the, the update to the OP? The report notes that, and secondly, the report notes that we are obliged within a year to at least begin, I think it was begin the process, or at least to undertake this process once the region has done theirs. What happens if we don't do this? I guess those are the two questions for me.
Certainly through you, Mr. Chair. So we are, you know, it is a requirement of the Planning Act to update our official plan, to bring it in conformity with the, the region's plan, and more importantly, in conformity with the, the new amendments to the growth plan. The timelines for that, at least for the, for the region to update their official plan, and I don't believe that's changed, is the 2020, 20, by 2022. So we're, again, we're, we're required, we do have an item in our capital budget for an OP update, so we would have to do that, you know, you know, my recommendation is we begin now, and but by 2021, 2022, we'd have to have a, an OP update prepared, once the region's completed their exercise for council's adoption. Again, last time this was completed was back in 2010.
I, I didn't have the liberty of going back to our 2019 budget. I know that there were some line items in that budget that outlined the cost. I know that when this was done in 2010, it was multiple millions of dollars that this town spent on the, on the official plan. And I know that that's not necessarily what's proposed here because it's an update, it's not starting over. And, you know, the, the white belts and the, the urban boundaries and the green areas are all sort of static, and we, but those aren't, aren't anticipated to change. I guess for me, my frustration is over the past nine years that we've been struggling to implement an official plan that we can't achieve, and that that money was, as I said earlier, is often sometimes a bit of a throwaway. And so I look at this official plan, and we weren't able to achieve its, its provisions. I, if we're going to have some future reporting, I would like to have an understanding of what the plan forecasted and what we actually delivered, both from a residential perspective, but even more importantly, from a job creation perspective. So we were obliged under the Planning Act to create an official plan that we couldn't actually implement. And so for me, this process is simply saying, well, we need to do an update to that plan that you still can't achieve. And even just the, the preliminary numbers that are prepared for us today, the planning horizon for 2031 to 2036 has us adding 26,900 people in this course of five years. That's over 5,000 people a year, just in that particular window alone. And we have no certainty with respect to servicing, and, and, and that doesn't even include any of the job or the economic development piece, and we do not have any new serviced employment lands at this point. So I'm, I apologize, but I'm resisting planning and spending money and going through a process that seems somewhat futile, at least to me, from the past nine years of my experience. So I, I'm, I understand and agree that we need to advocate to have the white belt lands put in so that we can start to plan that process. But the overall scheme of things is I don't think we're going to be meeting those, those population or employment targets, so why go through the exercise? More of a statement, Mr. Chair, than, than a question.
My, if I may, I understand that if, my understanding is that if we do not take advantage of this by the, the timing, that we would take ourselves out of being, you know, part of, part and parcel of the, the regional plans. And if we don't do that, if some servicing or becomes available, then we are further knocked down the road, delayed a considerable number of years. Is that, have I muddled that up, or can you interpret what I'm trying to think here, Mr. Ramuno?
Certainly through you, Counselor Crone. No, no, that's the, that, that's accurate, and I understand the concerns of Counselor Roy DiClemente with respect to, you know, in the past, our targets perhaps haven't been, haven't been achieved. The one thing that I would say is, and again, you're correct, it isn't a rewrite, we did a complete rewrite of the official plan, as most municipalities did back in 2010. In this case, it's really an update with respect to extending that a planning horizon, you know, a 20-year period from 2030, 2031 to 2041, and updating the forecasts, the population and employment forecasts that we will be getting from the region, and that will be distributed to the, the nine municipalities within, within York region. You know, my, my advice to council is that, you know, the planning process of bringing in lands into the urban boundary is a, takes a long time. And the one example I provided, it's probably the extreme example, is Queensville, the original planning was done for that, brought into the urban boundary by the region, and town prepared a secondary plan back in the early or mid 90s. And, and we only started, you know, then at that point, you follow through with the development approvals and all the E.A. approvals and permitting, et cetera. And we got to issuing, issuing the first, you know, servicing and first billing permits just a couple of years ago. But, you know, and, and that may be an extreme example, but, you know, it'll take 10-plus years once we get the urban, white belt lands within the urban boundary for us to then complete our, our detailed OP and secondary plan process. And, and that way, we'll have control with respect to identifying phasing policies with respect to, you know, how and when these new areas will, will build out. But again, I think if we don't, you know, deal with it during this round, it may, we may be talking, you know, 10 years from now where we're trying to get these lands into the urban boundary, and they get, and again, that could take 10-plus years to actually get those, you know, approved by way of an official plan and secondary plan and the various development approvals that are required to bring some of those lands on stream. And again, you know, it is a, an amendment that is coming from the, the growth plan is really to a new objective, to provide a, a more of a housing supply, a greater housing supply, bringing back to the market, and a mix and range of housing units that we've been lacking in the region over the past number of years. And that will, you know, will assist in trying to ease the housing prices that we've seen over the last few years.
Thank you. Counselor Carruthers, you have a question?
Thank you. How many acres do we currently have that are ready for development, but development has not yet occurred? Or sorry, where it's planned. We're talking about putting these white belt lands into the plan so we can start planning for development. But my question is, how mu, how many acres are, do we currently have that's slated for development where the development has not yet occurred?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's a good question. I don't have that information available at this point, but we, me and my staff are working with the region to try and get a handle on that. Not only that, but our, our number of housing units that are currently in our system with respect to being approved. We've got a pretty good handle with respect to what have, number of units that have been registered and built over the last two or three years. But that's information that we're trying to compile, and we should have that information over the next week or so, because we have another meeting scheduled with reading. Again, we're sharing this information with the region with respect to, you know, our, our land supply and the number of units that we currently have approved and in the system. But I'll certainly report back to council when I have that information.
Thank you. It's my feeling that this is a little premature. If we don't know what we have right now that's available to develop, to be saying that we need to be turning all these into urban sprawl areas so that we can have it ready for when we need it down the road, it, just to me, it seems very, very premature. So I'm assuming this is what's going to take us beyond the 100,000 that were already slated for 2031. And I think about, you know, the constituents that I represent, what, what they would have to say about this, and I, I'm not sure that they would want that white belt land turned into, into more of an urban area. We, we have our, our, you know, we're a collection of small towns, and, and people seem to enjoy that, that we just join them all together, and that's why I use the term urban sprawl. This urban area would just make it all one big town. And I'm not sure that's really what the residents want. I feel like we need more of a presentation on this, and maybe it's my lack of understanding. And I, I've read through this, I've read through it a couple of times, and I still don't see the need for this at this time. I note the comments about changing density, decreasing density, and I, I worry about the impact on walkability in our communities if, if you lower the density, the, the changes to our ability to make it transit-friendly communities if we're looking at a lower density. And I think the most important thing to me was when I read through this, and I got to the alignment with our strategic plan, and it, it's shown that this report aligns with three areas of our strategic plan. The one that was left off, I think, is very significant. It's not saying that this, this report aligns with responsible growth and environmental protection. And to me, that's wrong, that when we're talking anything to do with development, we have to align to our strategic plan priorities about responsible growth and environmental protection. So as this is presented today, it's not something that, that I could support, but I'd be very happy to have a, a more in-depth presentation and, and sit down and talk about why we are looking at, you know, committing the last remaining lands in East Goulambury to, to urban area rather than, you know, consulting with our community and what, what did they see these areas being.
Mayor Haxson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering, in light of the discussion that we've had, perhaps we could put this onto a workshop topic and spend a dedicated amount of time to answer some of the questions that have been brought up this afternoon.
Mr. Webster?
I think through you, Chair Crone, the points are well made. It is a large initiative, that's for sure. And I think what it really does need is a, a full session. We'll have to go through each and every one of our communities and show what, what gets built. There's some certainties we do have. We do know that we have an initial phase from the York Durham system that was outlined recently by the region. And I believe in our, our development dashboard, we have about 5,000 homes still to be built. And the challenge we have right currently is not necessarily the homes, it's the jobs that would go along with the homes that Counselor Roy DiClemente raised. But I think what we could do is go through each of the communities existing and show how even in the pink settlement areas, there's going to be incomplete communities with the servicing. And essentially, on a comprehensive basis, a lot of it does get tied to our next servicing phase, the Upper York. Because when you start getting into the Upper York and 2041 and beyond, the, the number for population is, is 100,000, and it's, it's even a more aggressive target for employment because employment then is playing catch-up. And I'm advised that the white belts are a strategic inclusion. And I think that we have to prove that point to council and the public, that it's not sprawl, but in fact, it's, it's a strategic initiative. So I think the non-alignment to that growth management economics, that was a mistake in that report, and that should be corrected for the record. And staff would not have any difficulty if this was referred back, to be brought back in a workshop format in the coming months. And I think we even have workshops scheduled, possibly in June, it might be a little longer than that. But I don't know if there's a rush, given that the new OPs have until 2022 to be brought forward.
Are there any other questions? So given recent comments, do we need to pull this, this motion? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that it could be received and referred back to a workshop. I, I think that it could be received and referred back to a workshop. I believe it was my motion.
Yeah, it was your motion. Okay. Do we have a vote on that then? All in favor? Okay, none opposed? Right, motion carried. Second item on the agenda is Development Services Planning Branch Report Improving Development Proposal Public Notice Signage. Mr. Ramuno, could you comment on this?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of this report is really to advise counsel and seek direction to, to update our, and improve our do and application of public notice signs. And those are the signs that the development proposals, proponents are required to place on their, on their property in advance of a public meeting. And I think it's, it's time that we update the, the signage. And so the proposal is to amend our requirements to update those public notice signs as some of our neighboring municipalities have done. The New Markets, Milton, City of Toronto have done. They are a little more eye-catching. They do provide that notice information, engage the residents with respect to exactly when the meeting, that it is a public meeting, it is a development proposal, and to provide some colors, you know, our logo and some colored renderings. So the, you know, a resident doesn't necessarily need to read all the fine print with respect to determining what the proposal is, is all about.
Thank you very much. Could I have a mover for this? Counselor Carruthers, are there any questions? Counselor Carruthers?
I'm happy to move this because I think this is such a positive step in the right direction. I think that sometimes the complaints we get are just because people didn't know. You know, they didn't read the black and white sign. But I think this lays it out very clearly for them. I'm wondering if there's a possibility, especially in the future, to have a QR code put on these signs so that people could just go up with their smartphones and get that information. Those QR codes are the little squares that you see for people who aren't familiar with that and links immediately to a website. And it would be a great way for people to get more information quickly and easily and make sure they're getting the right information, not struggling with the, the website figuring out where to go. Thank you.
Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just happy to support this change. I think it's necessary and, and forward-thinking. The only comment I have is that these signs, once the statutory public meeting takes place, they tend to stay up and they, and I think, I feel that people tend to tune out or they languish there for years. Oh, there's a public meeting, it's happening in 2014. If there's a way for us to build into our operational guidelines for having them removed or updated within a timely fashion, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Ramuno, do you have a comment?
Certainly, to you, Mr. Chair. Just on that note, we do currently have a requirement in our application guideline that requires, you know, when the sign has, that the sign has to be placed, you know, 20 is in advance of the public meeting. And then similarly, the sign needs to be removed a week following, you know, council's consideration of, of the application. So I think what we'll need to do is just moving forward is to keep on top of those and enforce that and place calls out to the, the applicants, ensure that they come down once council's considered the final planning report on a given application.
Are there any other comments, questions? I think from my perspective, these, the old signs kind of are the modern-day equivalent of a, or, or the old equivalent of a end-user agreement that you go on your computer and you scroll through. No one ever reads it and they click yes and away you go. So I think this is welcome news. Can, can we have a vote on this? All in favor? None opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So that's the end of our, our items. General Manager Ramuno, do you have any, any other comments or feedback to provide to, to us?
So you, Mr. Chair, no, nothing further.
Okay. Any, any other general questions? No, thank you very much. I hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We are under Item K, Legal and Council Support Services with Counselor Foster and the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report that we need to deal with today is Legal and Council Support Services, 2019-07, dealing with cannabis and a smoking bylaw. Mr. Horner, any comments?
Just to briefly introduce this one, this is actually a, a joint report with Emergency and Community Services. And what, what the Chief and I are proposing is that council enact a no-smoking bylaw that would apply to all municipal property. And when, when we say no-smoking, the, the intention would be to catch smoking of tobacco, smoking of cannabis and vaping as well. And I, I think there are a number of factors driving the report. And, you know, the, the primary one really is the legalization of cannabis. And people are wondering, you know, where can they smoke? And, you know, where can't they smoke? Then the other factor, of course, is the, the increased popularity of vaping in, in, in recent years. And, and while the Smoke Free Ontario Act does, does regulate these products and, and does prohibit smoking of these products in limited situations, they don't really go, the concern is that they don't go far enough to protect people from secondhand smoke. And so municipalities are responding with no-smoking bylaws. And we've got one on the books today. But the problem with the bylaw that we have on the books today is it just covers, covers tobacco. So, so that's, you know, that's the proposal. And the Chief and I would be very happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Can I have a mover? Mr. Crone? And any questions from committee? I can't believe it, no questions. So we can move, yeah, we can move ahead with the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. And with that, I will give it back to you, Mayor Haxson.
Thank you very much. We're under L administration with myself in the chair. There are no reports at this time. Mr. Webster, do you have anything to bring before our group?
I do, Madam Mayor. Just an observation, over the weekend, listening to 105.9, the local radio, the city of Arilla recently passed a very similar bylaw on smoking and vaping on public lands and buildings and properties. And they were doing a lot of radio advertising to portray it, to communicate it to their public. So I'll, I'll make sure that our, our communications group is aware of that because I think advertising this will be good for the community as society will assist with enforcement, I'm sure. Just a couple of quick updates, if I may, about our staff team, our leadership team we can be proud of. Aaron Carmazin, who regularly attends Parks and Recreation Ontario, this year was nominated to the board. And we're proud of Aaron in that respect. I assisted in nominating him and he's going to play a key strategic role in, in not only our community, but bringing his experience from other communities and continuing to learn and innovate. So congratulations to Aaron. Our solicitor, Dean Horner, his pseudo, or volunteer hours in his community. Dean is now a member of the Heritage Advisory Committee in Stovall. And he also sits on the Committee of Adjustment for Stovall as well. So I think that's something that our community can be proud of, that, the kind of skills and outreach that our leadership team has. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And the third one is, if we can continue on the theme of cars that weren't in the budget and trucks, or were in or weren't out. If I could ask the clerk to put up, one thing that we have not really portrayed in here is one of our key employers is New Roads. And New Roads has obviously been putting on a significant addition, employs about 100 folks in that, in the GM dealership. But they've also have a consortium now where they, they have Chrysler's and Subaru and Mazda, I believe, as well. And not only were they the keynote sponsor of our Zamboni, this was a few budgets a year ago, that they actually purchased the town Zamboni and, and they're our, at the arena, they have the New Roads symbol as our flagship, Western Pad. Our CPRC group got discussing with them the need for a community vehicle. And Michael Croxton and his team generously donated this Silverado to, to us for use. And it's, it's provided to us for two years. There's no cost at all to the lease, they're doing it as a matter of goodwill. We did pay some nominal dollars for the vehicle wrap, but I think we're going to be seeing this. We saw it at our, our night of the community open house. And hopefully we'll be seeing this throughout the community as we, as we move forward. So I think it's something that we, again, want to thank, formally thank New Roads for, for the dedication. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Would you like a motion to send a letter to New Roads and thank them for their generosity and community support? Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Webster? See none, we'll move to Item M, and that's Other Business. And we will start with item number one. Mr. Velcek, with the Community Services Communication Branch Report.
Madam Mayor, I would just ask our Director of Communications, perhaps, to come to the mic and provide a little bit of perspective on what we've done as a team to, to provide committee with a draft resolution, to provide, I guess, the perspective of this committee and council into the regional governance review. So if you're okay with it, I'd just ask Laura to make a few comments to put that into perspective a little bit for us.
Thank you, Mark, Madam Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is just a brief background report of the information we've provided to you previously and also sits on our website. It's just a general overview of the regional governance review and what they were moving through. At the end of that, there is an appendix which outlines a number of resolutions. So these resolutions here were jointly passed by the municipalities of Richmond Hill, Georgina and King. As you move through the resolutions, there are some generic ones at the top that just speak to the general overview of the review. And as you move down, I think, number five, six, seven, eight and nine, those have been captured out of the previous position that the town had posted on our website. So that was a memo that came to you several months ago. And so they've just been added in to ensure that our message has been captured as well. Each municipality did the same thing, so they all have a portion that is unique to themselves. Vaughn and Stovall also submitted information from their municipalities. It's important to note that all of the municipalities supported the current two-tier system. Stovall had a much shorter resolution that they decided to develop on their own. And Vaughn actually had a consultant come in and do a report about possibilities of the review. And they submitted that report with a resolution. So that's the difference with those two.
Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Is this cut and stone, or can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely, it's open for discussion.
Number five, we say that we're one of the smallest councils. I'm just wondering if that doesn't stand out as ripe for amalgamation and if we instead want to say one of the most efficient. Just wondering if change in language there more accurately reflects what we're trying to get across. And secondly, in number six, we talk about high-quality programs and services for our residents. And I'm just wondering, again, if with the service to our residents is, is part about being small and having counselors who are working hard for the residents? If we could just add a qualifier word with services, with saying high-quality programs and, you know, effective services or something along those lines, just to bump that up, to show that the services that we're delivering would not be the same if it weren't for the council that we have in place. Thanks.
Perhaps effective and efficient. I have been through all of the ones that have continued to come in from the other municipalities, including right across the province. And I know that the word efficiencies continue to show up in, in a lot of both the direction from the province and, and those that are trying to put something together as we have. We are efficient, we're very efficient, and we should put it in there at some point, so. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Question to you, Madam Mayor. Is this in alignment with what you have stated with the, the panel previously? I wouldn't want to contradict anything you said.
It, it is, it is very consistent with what we talked about with the panel. As I indicated after, we had, had followed up with that interview. I believe that most municipalities had the same answers. They all had the same questions. And, and this outlines for us very, very succinct where, where we stand and where we want to be next year and 10 years from now. Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you. I, one of the thoughts that I had when I was sitting in the, the public consultation process at York Region a few weeks ago, residents from other municipalities were submitting that they, they saw tremendous value in the concept of kind of local, on-the-ground governance and leadership. And that they, that the residents more often than not always contacted their ward counselor rather than their regional counselor when they had questions or concerns. And that people really felt, saw the value of that, I think of it as boots on the ground, that, that those local leaders provide, provide local and specialized, I guess, to a cer, to a certain extent, specialized understanding of the communities that they serve. And I, I didn't, I didn't see it fully captured in this resolution. It's not that it's absent, you know, we talk about, about being local. But I think that for a lot of the people who were, who were submitting comments, it was about that, hey, my, my local council gets me and gets my community and knows what I need and delivers that service effectively. And I, and I wanted to kind of talk, I, I was hoping that could be reflected a little bit more in, in this resolution. And I don't know how it, how it appears, but I'd like to see that, if we could incorporate it. Please and thank you.
I, I've written down here, in-depth knowledge of their individual communities. And that speaks both with a community like ours, where we have communities within the community as, as well as overarching. Counselor Carruthers?
I think that might fit quite nicely in number 13. It talks about community, communities, and it talks about our distinct identity. But I think it's, we understand our distinct identity and needs of our community within communities. So I think we, we get the word needs right in to number 13.
Counselor Roy DiClemente?
That sounds great. I, for me, it was the, the, I called it on-the-ground governance and leadership, that it's, that it's local and specialized. A local specialized understanding of the community's needs.
Sure, Madam Mayor, just trying to capture that on 13. If we can just have that again, please?
Mr. Webster?
I think what we might best do, we're going to have to adopt this for timelines at council this evening anyway. And if we can get the input from the, all members of council, maybe what we could do is the staff team could take it away and try to massage it. And then tonight, we could consider a, a final draft where the ink will still be wet.
Yes.
So we've gotten input so far. And if, if there's any others that, where they would like to perfect the wording, that, that would be helpful.
I'm not seeing any others at this time, but there's, there's several hours between now and we come back again. One never knows what, what else. This is, this is a very personal document for all of us in this room. And this is our opportunity to talk about why we need to continue to do what we're doing on a daily basis. The one comment I, I believe that they would forward it to all York Region municipalities, I might, I might suggest the GTA municipalities. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments? Stay tuned. We're not finished yet. I have a feeling before we finish it all. But thank you, staff, for capturing all that you have. Mr. Lamanna.
Through you, Madam Mayor. My suggestion would be that the resolution of the report also include that the recommendations of this report be ratified at Councilman Hill tonight. And then I think the intent or the message that we're going to be forwarding to other levels of the province is this resolution that you're discussing. So I think if council were presented that resolution and voted on separately tonight with the ratification, I think it would be appropriate.
Thank you. Number 14, when it talks about to all the municipalities of York Region, I'm assuming that also includes York Region, but it doesn't exactly spell that out. I know we're nitpicking, or I'm nitpicking now, but I think that's important, that we share it with our other eight municipalities in the region. Any other comments, questions? And so we will, do you want to motion now to move it to tonight?
So the motion would be, as per the staff report presented on the agenda, plus the addition of recommendation to ratify tonight.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Crone. As amended.
And is it a draft? Are we right now voting on the?
My understanding is there's a draft. We've been doing this on the fly, and now staff can make sure that grammatically it's correct, and we've added a few extra things, et cetera, for tonight. So, yes, yes. Any other questions? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item number two is the Joint Corporate Services Development Services and Legal Council Support Services Report, LCSS 2019-09, Bill 108 amendments. Mr. Webster.
Madam Mayor and council, this is somewhat of omnibus legislation, where it's far-reaching, it's quick-moving, and it covers everything from LPAT rules to new criteria for Official Plans and Planning Act decisions, to Heritage Act, to how we would fund growth. There's a lot of moving pieces in this one. And unfortunately, staff have done the best job they can in trying to put together bullet points of areas of what the legislation is intending to do, and what our preliminary thoughts or positions are. But I think we're still, at this point, monitoring it. The unfortunate part is, I believe that the deadline for this commenting is towards the end of the month. This is the only time we had to be in front of committee unless we were to call a special council session. So it's a little difficult. Unfortunately, there's a lot of gray in here. There's, you know, it's a lot of black and white is still to be seen. So we're at council's direction now as to whether or not they would like us to walk through each of the sections, or do you want to ask questions about specifics in there that might be more concerned than others. So it was put together by, I think this is one of the few reports we've had where it's signed by almost every department head. And so we have, we're all here, so you can direct it to the experts of the area.
Committee members, what's your pleasure? Okay. Any other suggestions? Let's start there, then.
So maybe I would ask Solicitor Horner, in conjunction with our General Manager of Development and our General Manager of Finance and Corporate Services, to speak to this.
I can kind of briefly talk about the resolution. The resolution originates with the mayor of the town of Aurora. He'd prepared something and forwarded it to Regional Council, you know, seeking endorsement. And, you know, what we have here is a, the region was good enough to share us the copy of their resolution is finally enacted. And so we have that. And what we did was, well, we thought that, you know, council might be interested in either adopting the same or similar resolution. And so we thought it was a good place to start with. So what we've done, of course, is taken the regional resolution and EGified it in the most basic way, really, just by taking out references to the region and inserting references to EG. But in terms of the, I suppose, the real effect of this one, it's to suggest that the province cease the process with Bill 108. It's at second reading right now, but cease the process with Bill 108, and actually engage municipalities and other interested people with a real opportunity to, A, read the 100 pages, which is the bill, which probably amends 200 or 300 pages of cross-reference material that you have to do, and then provide meaningful comment back to the province. So really, we've tried to hit this at the highest possible level. And it seems that, and Marco can speak to this better than I, but it seems that the real obvious and immediate concerns relate to the proposed amendments to the LPAT process and to the development charge.
Thank you, Mr. Horner. Mr. Reguino.
Certainly. With respect to the biggest changes Dean mentioned regarding the amendments to the LPAT, is really, is that two-step process not allowing the, currently under the LPAT process, if council makes a decision and then there's an appeal, the tribunal provides council with an opportunity, I believe it was within six months, to reconsider the previous decision. And one of the recommendations here is that it revert back to the old process where, once an application's been appealed to the board or tribunal, then it's in the hands of the tribunal for a hearing or a settlement negotiation. If you like, I can touch on some of the changes proposed under the Planning Act as well.
Please.
So the, let me scroll down. Again, that does relate to the one I touched on, the first point, is removing that opportunity for council to reconsider their decision and go to a hearing or some type of settlement. The other big change proposed is reducing the timeline, timelines or timeframes that council has in making a, considering a planning application. Over the years, you know, these have been changed. The proposal now is, for the three main applications, an official plan amendment application, the current timeline for council to make a decision is 210 days. That's being changed down to 180 days. For a zoning bylaw amendment application, the current timeline is, I believe, 180, and that's proposed to come down to 120. So really reducing the timelines by about a month. And planned subdivision applications, that's been reduced as well by about a month. So there is a concern there with respect to staff and council not having sufficient time to, you know, take in an application and consider that, take it through the planning approvals process. The other two changes that we've identified are the introduction of the community benefits charge to replace the Section 37, which is heightened density bonusing provision currently under the Act, which allows a municipality to negotiate benefits with a developer if council agrees to increase heights or densities on a particular property. And the other one is, you know, boosting the housing supply by permitting residential units and accessory buildings. Right now, currently, second suites are permitted as a right. Most municipalities, we have a bylaw that permits second suites, you know, whether they're a basement or an additional suite within the main principal residence. What one of the proposals in the Act now identifies that if a property has an accessory building, whether it's a garage or a coach house, our reading of this, and we haven't seen the regs yet, is that an additional unit, which could be a third one, would be permitted on that same property in an accessory building. So that would require, if this gets approved, that we would have to amend our zoning bylaw to bring it into, to bring it consistent with this change. If you like, I can touch on the, there's really a couple of changes to the Ontario Heritage Act as well. The two key ones there, again, first bullet point, increasing transparency. The proposal is that if council is going to consider adding a property to our heritage registrar or designated property, that we should, that the requirement is to notify in advance the property owner. Currently, the only notification required typically is really when council makes that decision to, in the case of designating a property, to issue a notice of intent to designate. So it's really to advise the property owner that council is considering to either add something to the registrar or to consider designating the property under Part IV of the Heritage Act. The other key change that we've identified is that currently, if there is a request to, if council makes a decision to designate a property under the Heritage Act, the applicant or the property owner, their recourse currently is to appeal that, and that goes to the Conservation Review Board. They consider the appeal request. It's non-binding. Conservation Review Board then is required within a certain time period to make a, render a decision to council. It's not binding, but it still rests with council's, under council's discretion, as to, you know, continue on with the designation request. The proposed change here is to essentially eliminate the Conservation Review Board. So if council designates a property, the applicant or property owner's recourse is then to just appeal that directly to the LPAT tribunal, then there would be a hearing.
Thank you very much. Any questions? It's a lot to absorb in a short period of time, for sure. Any suggestions at this point? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just within the resolution itself, the, under the "therefore it be resolved" that, number three, that we're calling upon the government to halt the legislative advancement, I think we want to simply ask them to pause or slow. There are, I mean, the message that I'm getting from reading this is there are some really concerning things, and then there are some things that aren't quite so bad. And so there are some aspects of this that may create some, get rid of some red tape and may streamline some things, but others that are seriously concerning. And so I don't think we want to simply say, you've got to stop what you're doing, but we want to ask them for more time in order to be able to digest this and make sure that they get it right. And then further, you know, the suggestion here is that a copy of the motion be sent to a number of folks here. It doesn't include MPP Mulrooney. I think, at this point, it's including and sending it to all MPPs in the province. And I don't know if that's necessarily going to be very effective or not. I think we really just want to scope it and say, you know, our MPP, York Region, the lower-tier municipalities, instead of all of the Ontario municipalities. But that's just my position, in that I think we're more effective when we're scoped in our communications, rather than we wallpaper the province with our resolution. But I'm just, just a thought.
I might suggest that the, all of the MPPs that encompass York Region, they know where we are, they know who we are, they've seen us out there, they, the others, I'm not so sure. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Crone.
Thinking, Madam Mayor, to staff, is there, to further Counselor Roy DeClemente's point, is there, we've heard some of the concerns, are there any upsides that you see to this legislation? Not all at once, please.
I can tell you, from sitting at the region on Thursday, there probably are some up points, good points in this, but it is so all-encompassing to take the time to read it through from many angles. First blush, you see something very different than later on. And with, I think there were 17 of us around the table on Thursday, people saw different things that affected their individual municipalities, either pro or con. Mr. Webster.
I think it's a little one-sided, because it puts all the onus on the municipalities right now, but there are some potentials. I think builders being able to sell product. One of the things is cost certainty, and so that sales were being made well in advance of cost structures being known. So they're trying to make municipalities move their cost certainty up closer. One of the thoughts would be, maybe they should have builders sell homes more realistically, based on when they're actually going to be available to the consumer. And that way, you don't have these closing adjustments. I think on the heritage front, and this is just personal perspectives, this goes back many council terms, but I don't think ours, our own list, which is very lengthy, was done in a fully transparent manner. I think our zoning bylaw was very transparent, and that's why we filled the chambers up here. And we're still working with the authority on settlements. But there's a lot of people that don't know they're on the list. And I think that's one of the objectives we have, is another report back to council on as to, well, is just our own heritage list and getting that in order. And frankly, some of the restrictions on the second housing units and accessory housings, there are municipalities that are much ahead of us. And I think that our processes tend to be a little onerous and bureaucratic, a little bit. And I think that we can learn from others. And I think this, again, is trying to streamline the municipal side, and maybe there's other areas that could be streamlined as well to assist. So I guess it's not all doomsday. I think the real issue you have, as Counselor Roy DeClemente pointed out, these things are all happening at a lightning pace. And maybe if they just had a little longer for consultation on some of these, it would be a little more balanced than when the final legislation moves forward.
Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you. I think it's really important that we communicate as clearly as possible. Given everything that you say, that this is a very confusing piece of legislation, sometimes I think that it's kind of the purpose of omnibus bills, is to get a whole bunch of stuff through. I also take the comment about our local MPP not being specifically stated in the list of who this is going to. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here, aside from this, is to have a letter from the mayor and perhaps our CAO as well, directly to MPP Mulrooney with this attached, with just, you know, a very brief cover letter that talks about, that we have serious concerns with this, that we are asking just a pause to consult. And I'm wondering if that might have more effect than, as somebody said, wallpapering the province with this. I think a lot of people skim through it, but I think she's one of our primary, she should be, our biggest advocate there, and making sure she's very clear on this big, confusing piece of legislation, what our position on it is. And I think if our position is very simply that we have serious, well, there is some good points, we have some serious concerns, and that we request we have some serious concerns, and that we request that they, that they just take a pause and take the time to consult, if we put that in covering letter, I think that might go a long ways.
Any other comments? Mr. Lamanna.
Much like the previous item, this will have to be ratified tonight, so we need to add that as part of the report resolution, and I think the body, in terms of the whereas statements, again, will be a separate motion on, on tonight's council agenda as well, so just to advise.
Okay. Do I have a mover? Counselor Morton. We'll bring it back tonight, we need to have it ratified tonight. We may be longer than we thought this evening, but we're here at seven, and we'll get this, get this job done. Not seeing any other questions? All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much, staff, very much appreciated. Is there anything else under other business? Mr. Lamanna.
Through you, Madam Mayor, just to remind council, the June 11th workshop topics, we previously talked about this at the, I believe, the May, the May meeting, we were talking about, or sorry, the April meeting, heritage list was one of the topics, and then I believe there's an extensive Health and Active Living Plaza workshop with the architects. Correct, Mr. Carson?
Is that a half day or a full day? Mr. Webster.
The heritage list is still, that work plan is still being developed and might be a little premature. We could have a, depending on the timing, possibly, I'd like to put the help on for sure, is, in the morning, and maybe we can reserve judgment on whether, we can advise in our first meeting in June, whether or not the, the discussion regarding growth management and some of that topic might be advanced, so we can at least not make decisions, but have a further education session with council.
Good, thank you. Okay. Seeing no other business, motion to adjourn at 3:53, moved by Counselor Carruthers. All those in favor? And that's carried. We have a choice of taking a 10-minute break and going into private, or leaving it until later this evening.